Okay, it's seven o'clock, we're about to open this meeting. First off, I'd like to congratulate and welcome Judy O'Connell on the Board of Selectmen, and congratulate Mike McCoy on his reelection, and to thank Ray Lepore for his nine years of service on this board and all the other things he's been involved in in town for many, many years, and wish him nothing but the best of luck. Okay, all present are accounted for, and are accounted for. We're going to start by transmitting Treasury Warrants forty-one, forty-one A, forty-two, and forty-two A.
Move the warrants as read by the chairman.
Second.
Ocean Bay in second, all favor. Anamis? We have no minutes to approve, so we're right to our seven o'clock appointment with Michael A. Kyra, Town Manager, status of fiscal year two thousand and twelve, local aide.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You will recall that the governor, in his release of the budget H. One back at the beginning of February, the end of January, for fiscal year two thousand and twelve, released his local aide estimates. And just recently, House Ways and Means, actually it was on April thirteenth, released their local aide figures through their budget proposal. The numbers from the governor's proposal and House Ways and Means proposal in the two major accounts are exactly the same. And I provided you with the local aide estimates that have been provided for the town of Wilmington. You can see fiscal year two thousand and eleven, the Chapter Seventy education aide was ten million one hundred and thirty-one thousand seven fifteen. The governor's budget brought to ten one eighty-six one oh seven, and that was the same number used by House Ways and Means in their budget proposal. So specifically, that number is fifty-four thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars more than the actual fiscal year eleven local aide. In terms of the unrestricted general government aide in fiscal year two thousand and eleven, the number was two million one hundred and three thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. And the governor's proposal, and again, the House Ways and Means budget proposal, mirror images, they're both at one nine five one one six three, which is a decrease of a hundred and fifty-two thousand and seventy-three dollars in terms of the fiscal year eleven local aide in that particular count. Overall, the House Ways and Means budget proposal was a hundred and thirty-nine point six million dollars higher than in fiscal year two thousand and eleven statewide for Chapter Seventy, and it reduced the unrestricted general government aide by about sixty-five million dollars. Except for a few minor changes overall in Chapter Seventy due to different enrollment adjustments, again, those numbers are the same statewide with every community. And in our cases, in many cases, as in most cases, it's exactly the same. And most of the other cherry sheet accounts that are funded at the House One level, with the exception of the police career incentive, were the same. Police career incentive aide actually was eliminated under the governor's proposal. It came in at seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Under the House Ways and Means proposal, it was eliminated. And that accounts for the slight difference of seventeen thousand dollars and change between the two different versions. Now, what I've also provided for you is, on that second page, the local aide estimates that go back, actually, through fiscal year two thousand and nine. But more importantly, I wanted you to take a look at the differences between what we're currently anticipating getting from the, if the governor or the House Ways and Means budget goes forward, as compared to what we had predicted. And that's where the numbers get better. Chapter Seventy, for example, is five hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars higher than what our estimate was for the budget. Once again, we're always conservative in our budget estimates, and we looked at last year's numbers and reduced those numbers by about five percent based upon information that we had been getting. But if these numbers hold through, then we will be back up in the area that we received last year. Similarly, in terms of unrestricted general government aide, we thought there was going to be a greater cut, and we reduced that to just under one point nine million dollars. So although there'd be a reduction from FY eleven levels, if these numbers hold true, it would still be an increase over what we had expected of approximately fifty-eight thousand dollars. So those are the numbers that we're looking at. In terms of the local aide assessments, again, we're pretty much right online. More importantly, I think, is, you know, what I wanted to mention to the board is that the Senate, and I want to be able to quote them correctly if I have them here, that the Senate actually voted just recently to provide the budget numbers in those two categories at not less than what the House Ways and Means and Governor's Budget was. So that's good news. That means that we're at that, that's the threshold we are at right now. So that was, you know, an important vote for the town, and really for all towns. They did that on April fourteenth, when they approved a resolution specifically declaring its intent to fund Chapter Seventy unrestricted general government aide at levels not less than the amounts appearing in the House Ways and Means Committee budget. So if that holds true, and I see no reason why it wouldn't at this point, we will be in relatively good shape going into the fiscal year twelve budget with regard to local aide. If the board has any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Kyra. Maybe procedurally, in some line items, I see increases, as you went through and highlighted, and in some cases, there were some decreases. But the overall is that what you provided us as an estimate, we in fact, the net total at the end is going to be more, by about fifty-eight. Is that what you said, fifty-eight thousand or something to that?
Well, in total, the net will increase by about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Are we able to divert any of those fund areas that are now, I guess, deficient or that are being underfunded to make up for the gap? Do you follow the question?
I do, I do, but the difference is that this is next year's money.
Okay.
So this, we wouldn't be able to use this money, which is not real yet until it gets adopted and, you know, we get it, you know, in our quarterly local aide assessments, quarterly local aide entitlements in fiscal year twelve. So if there are any gaps in this year's budget, like snow and ice, et cetera, we would try to pay for those with any surplus money in this year's account. Now, further to that, if we did not, in terms, specifically the snow and ice, we can deficit spend there, and then we would have to use some money from next year. It has not been our practice to do that. We try to meet all the obligations from year to year, but that would be a potential use of any funds, of any unexpected funds coming in next year.
And I do, one other thing that I noticed, thank you. One other thing that I noticed was charter tuition reimbursements was a fairly drastic drop, and to what does that, I mean, I can see, you know, a percentage here or there, but it's less than half of what the estimate was, and do you have an explanation or understanding of why that might be?
It just means that less kids went from Wilmington to charter school.
Okay. I mean, I guess that's a good thing, right? Very well, that's all my questions, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, comments, Judy?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Very good. Okay. Thank you. Can our seven fifteen discussion assignment of motions for annual town meeting?
Okay.
Take out the purple book.
Right, this is the Finance Committee booklet where the recommendations of Finance Committee and the Planning Board relative to the warrant articles are being made available for the annual town meeting. I just hold it up for a second so that residents should have received this booklet in the mail by now. If for some reason they didn't receive a copy, they will be available at the town meeting, but we would encourage folks to bring their copy of this booklet to the town meeting next Saturday. As the chairman indicated, this is the meeting that we assign motions and discuss, to the extent that the board would like to discuss, the various articles that are coming before the town meeting, specifically the articles that are being brought forward by the town, by the Board of Selectmen. Article one obviously was the election which has been held. Article two, and we're beginning on page two of this Finance Committee booklet, will be to hear reports of committees and to act thereon, and I will offer that motion to take no action, Mr. Chairman, because there are no committees that are reporting back from the last town meeting to this town meeting. And Article three also, a housekeeping article that would raise money if necessary to pay unpaid bills of previous years, and we don't have unpaid bills, and so I would also move that that article not be adopted. Article four is where the treasurer collector with the approval of the Board of Selectmen are authorized to enter into banking agreements for banking services, and unless the board objects to the order, it's typically the chairman, and then we'll go down in terms of seniority. If, when I mention these assignments, anybody on the board prefers not to do a particular article, and we can just move them around, but as you know, it really is merely to introduce the article.
Right.
And then there'll be people available in addition to yourselves to speak on the articles. So Article four would be by the chairman. Article five and all of the subsequent articles within Article five would be offered by the Finance Committee Chairman, John Dougherty. This is the budget article, which would come before town meeting. And then if anybody is following along with their booklet at home, you would turn to page number twelve, and the first article on that page is Article Six, which would allow the town to purchase needed equipment, particularly for its fleet. In this case, Mr. McCoy would be asked to provide the motion specifically for the five replacement police cruisers for the police department. The cost is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then we would ask Mr. Newhouse to make the motion with regard to the fire department's purchase of a rapid response vehicle. The estimated cost would be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And these are all from the regular operating budget appropriations. Next, Mr. Shampoo would be asked to make the motion to raise forty-two thousand dollars to purchase two cargo van trucks for the public buildings department. And then Ms. O'Connell would be asked to make the motion to raise two hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred, I'm sorry, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, two three nine nine fifty, to purchase vehicles for the Department of Public Works, including a three-quarter ton pickup truck, a replacement skid steer loader, and a replacement catch basin cleaner truck. The chairman would be asked to present the motion to appropriate sixty thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars to purchase a replacement wheelchair accessible transport van for the Department of Elderly Services. Selectman McCoy would be asked to make the motion to appropriate forty-seven thousand dollars for the purchase of a replacement wheelchair accessible minivan for the school department. Selectman Newhouse on Article number seven. So that would complete Article Six. Article seven would be offered by Selectman Newhouse, and that would be to appropriate three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars for three roof replacement projects, one at the Wildwood Early Childhood Center, one at the Public Buildings Department Headquarters, and the other at the Public Works Department Headquarters. Again, if there are any questions, just stop me. I know you've been through this half a dozen times now. Article eight would be offered by Selectman Shampoo, three hundred and ten thousand dollars for the purchase and installation of upgraded fire alarm systems at both the North Intermediate School and the Woburn Street School. That price is inclusive of both those schools. Selectman O'Connell would offer Article Nine, the motion for Article Nine, which would raise eighty-five thousand dollars for the purchase and installation of a high-energy, efficient, forced hot air furnace at the Boutwell Early Childhood Center. I'd ask the chairman to make the motion on Article Ten, which would be to raise seventy-five thousand dollars for the purchase and installation of replacement windows and doors at the Wilmington Memorial Library. Article eleven would be offered by Selectman McCoy to raise ninety-four thousand seven hundred dollars to make improvements at various school and recreational play areas, including the Woburn Street School, tennis courts, the Boutwell School, tennis and basketball courts, and the Justin Andrew O'Neill Memorial Skate Park, which is located at the Shawshin Article twelve would be offered by Selectman Newhouse to raise a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for miscellaneous repair projects throughout the facilities in the town of Wilmington that would enable us to undertake various improvements and repairs at both municipal and school facilities. Article thirteen is the transfer article, which I would offer, as has been customary, where we would transfer funds from available two thousand and eleven accounts to fiscal year two thousand and eleven accounts that may be deficit accounts. I can tell you right now, we'll need additional funds in the heating oil account and in the snow and ice, obviously. And we are in the process of identifying surplus accounts. We believe we have some money, for example, in the trash account, where we could cover this, but we'll have that article available before the end of the week, and it will be provided to the Finance Committee for their review. And we'll also have it available, as we have been for the town meeting.
Right.
Where voters can pick up the proposed article at the meeting. Obviously, we wait as long as we can in order to determine as best we can what the deficits and surplus accounts would be for two thousand and eleven. This is really our last chance to do this. Article fourteen would be offered by Selectman Shampoo, and it would be to raise fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars to continue the provision of a senior citizen work opportunity program, known as the Senior Citizen Tax Work Off Program. Article fifteen would be offered by Selectman O'Connell to raise six thousand dollars for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day celebrations in the town of Wilmington. Article sixteen would be offered by Selectman Semaglia to provide seven hundred and fifty dollars to any of the veterans organizations in town who have a clubhouse. Article seventeen would be offered by Selectman McCoy, and that would be to reauthorize revolving accounts pursuant to the general laws. This specifically would be for the sale of composting bins and also for the subsurface sewage disposal upgrade revolving fund program that the town is engaged in. Article eighteen would be offered by the Water and Sewer Commission. Again, this is pretty much the tailings now from the funding that we received in the lawsuit with regard to the MTBE products liability litigation settlements. We would be moving just over thirty-nine hundred dollars into the water fund. Article nineteen would be offered by Selectman Newhouse, and it would be the article relative to the imposition of a local meals tax. Article twenty would be offered by Selectman Shampoo, and it would be the acceptance of street articles, specifically Leonard Lane and Mill Road Extension. Article twenty-one would be offered by Selectman O'Connell, and this would be to accept the provisions of the Mass General Law with regard to being able to keep the building closed on a Saturday when the general laws would otherwise determine that it would have to be open relative to voting issues. Article twenty-two would be offered by the chairman, and again, the chief of police will be available to speak on this article, and this would be the article that would establish curfew hours and related regulations in the town's public parks, playgrounds, and fields. Article twenty-three would be offered by Selectman McCoy, and again, the chief of police would be available to speak to this. It would amend Chapter Five, Section Twenty-three in its entirety, establish a new bylaw that would establish regulations and requirements for the licensing and operation of dealers and junk, all metals, and secondhand articles. Article twenty-four would be offered by Selectman Newhouse, and again, Chief Begonis would be available to speak to this article, and it would also be amending the current bylaws and replacing this particular section with a new section that would establish regulations and requirements for the licensing and operation of the town of pawnbrokers. Article twenty-five would be offered by Selectman O'Connell, and it would be to establish a home rule petition article that would exempt the town of Wilmington from any liability with regard to the Maple Meadows landfill. You will recall that this was actually adopted and passed in two thousand and nine, at the two thousand and nine town meeting, but was never finalized at the legislature, and therefore we're bringing it back again with the initial support from Senator Tyler. Article twenty-six would be offered by the chairman, and it would be to amend the charter of the town of Wilmington by eliminating the requirement that the town manager be a resident of the town during his term of office. The remaining articles, Mr. Chairman, are petition articles. I don't know if you wanted me to speak to those, but.
No, I think we've done that plenty of times.
So if there are any questions that the board has with regard to the assignment of motions, we'll provide all of this information to the board on Friday evening in a package that will be delivered.
I thought by finally having some seniority over the new Selectmen, I wouldn't get the longest one on the book, but it looks like it didn't work out that way. Any questions? Okay, communications.
Mr. Chairman, we have a legislative alert from the Massachusetts Municipal Association regarding the municipal insurance reform plan that you have been reading about. In this case, the MMA is asking the communities to support municipal health insurance reform that is in the House budget and to oppose what they refer to as the crippling amendment that has been offered by Labor and co-signed by forty-nine state representatives. They're asking that we contact our state representatives to, again, urge them to support Speaker DeLeo's health insurance reform plan, which he proposed along with the chairman of the House Ways and Means Committee, that we believe would offer real reform for cities, towns, and taxpayers. Essentially, the measure would give cities and towns the same power the state has to implement necessary cost-saving changes in municipal health insurance plans outside of collective bargaining. And that information is available to the Board of Selectmen. It's my understanding that Representative Misselli is among those forty-nine reps who have co-signed the amendment that has been offered by Labor. I believe that Representative Murphy is supporting the speaker's proposal, which is endorsed by the MMA.
Can I offer a question on this point as well? Mr. Kyra, do you have any sense of, I don't mean to catch you off guard here, but do we have a sense of what it would mean in dollars, or estimate dollars, if the town of Wilmington were to have the ability? I guess it's hard to calculate, but is it fair to say that there could be cost savings, appreciable cost savings to the town of Wilmington's operating budget with regards to healthcare if we were able to negotiate plan design in the same way that the state works or designs healthcare plans for its employees?
I suspect that there would be. I haven't, we haven't quantified that. One of the things here is we have, you've probably read a lot about the city of Lowell grappling with Master Medical.
Yes.
It's been in the newspapers. We've already done that. We had several years ago, back in the early two thousands, implemented some alternative health insurance plans, HMOs and PPOs, and at that time, we had over seven hundred, we had all of our membership on the Master Medical Program. We've reduced that now to just thirty-nine members, and so we did that through a collective bargaining process, which continues as we attempt to bring everyone into that, into one of the alternative plans, which are less expensive. We also made it mandatory for retirees to have to go into one of those plans. So we've, I guess what I'm saying specifically is that a lot of the savings that is being talked about, we have gone that route in terms of reducing membership on the most expensive plan, the Master Medical Plan. Specifically to your questions, you know, cities and towns, if they got this, would be able to implement changes in copayments and deductibles and other plan features that I think would enable us to save some money. Again, that's not been quantified. The one piece of the plan that, you know, and we're not really crazy about is the cost sharing of savings that would have to happen with the unions, and there would be a percentage of savings. So if we identified savings, we would have to do some type of cost sharing. With Speaker DeLeo's plan, it is much more palatable because it limits it to ten percent, and as I understand it, limits it to health-related services. So although I can't give you a, you know, I can't quantify a number. I can tell you that there would be an opportunity, a savings opportunity, that would present itself to the town if this passed. So it's certainly a step in the right direction. If the amendment passes, frankly, I think that we would be worse off than we are right now. So I would hope that the legislature would, if they do anything at all, would stick with the DeLeo plan and as a fallback, do nothing, you know, as opposed to buying into that amendment.
Thank you. You know, this strikes, this whole issue strikes me as odd that the state has a set of standards that they adhere to for its employees, but that they mandate to the municipalities that we adhere to a different set of standards. At a bare minimum, it seems like they ought to allow the local level to at least be able to do what they do at the state level. And I don't understand, and maybe I'm just not a small-minded, but I don't understand why they would have any resistance to it. And I haven't studied the article here, but I encourage residents to reach out to our legislators and get an understanding of it, and if possible, to encourage them to support Speaker DeLeo's plan, because it certainly means potential savings for cities and towns, and that's good for us. So thank you, Mr. Kyra, for the explanation on it.
The board has a copy of a brief memorandum from me, and I know that I had notified you in an earlier packet, but just to let the public become aware, the Richardson Estate on which the town holds a preservation restriction has in fact been transferred to historic New England. And I provided the copy of the deed, which was recorded at the Middlesex North Registry of Deeds on April fourteenth, two thousand and eleven. So again, the town still holds a preservation restriction on the Richardson Estate at two eighty Woburn Street. However, the. However, the property itself, in terms of ownership, has now been transferred by the trustee to historic New England. Also wanted to bring another item to the attention of the, of the public. Again, we've written about this in many, many items in Town Topics, but this is somewhat topical, and so I wrote this memorandum just to remind residents that the Board of Health in cooperation with the Wilmington Police Department is in fact sponsoring its second National Drug Takeback Day. On Saturday, April 30th, the two, the public may surrender expired, unwanted, or unused pharmaceutical-controlled substances and other medications for destruction. The Board of Health is reminding residents that unneeded or expired medications should not be flushed down the toilet. The board urges residents to avail themselves of this anonymous drug takeback initiative that would allow for the proper disposal of such medications. The event will take place from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Public Safety Building. We don't have control over when this, this date takes place, when this event takes place. It's done in conjunction with the Drug Enforcement Administration, the federal DEA, and so when I talk about anonymity, there will be representatives there at this particular event, and they are doing this in the area. So you'll, Tewksbury, for example, I know is in the same timeframe. Otherwise, obviously, we would not be wanting to schedule this the same day as the, as the town meeting. But if people are interested in properly disposing unwanted and expired medications, this is the way that they should do it. Any questions, they can contact the Board of Health. Mr. Chairman, I provided you with a list of incumbents who you may wish to consider for reappointment, appointments and reappointments are scheduled to be considered at the May 9th, 2011 Board of Selectmen meeting. These are specifically selectman appointments, and I only list for you those individuals whose terms are about to expire and who we would ask the board to consider making appointments, whether they're these individuals or anyone. We would also, obviously, would like to have the positions filled at the board's next meeting. They include the Board of Appeals. It's a five-year term to expire in 2016. The incumbent is Charles Boyle. The Board of Registriers is a three-year term to expire in 2014. The incumbent is Edward Souza. Two positions, two two-year terms in the Council for the Arts that were expiring 213, 2013, Jane Crane and H. Elizabeth White. An appointment on the Council for the Arts Advisory Board is a one-year term, Barbara Forstall. The Scholarship Fund Committee, three-year terms to expire June 30th. The incumbents are Joanne Benton, Judith O'Connell, Suzanne Clark, and Carol King, and Robert Peterson, and I would indicate that selectman O'Connell has asked for a ruling to determine whether or not she could be in fact reappointed to this board, and we'll, we'll have that. But regardless, there are five appointments to be made. The town accountant, Michael Morris, as you know, the board appoints the town accountant to three-year terms. That term will expire on June 30th of 2014, as well as the town council's position, which is a one-year term. John Foskett of Deutsch Williams Brooks Torrance and Holland, that term also would expire on June 30th of 2012. And then in addition, there are constables that are listed. These are, we have listed these constables as those individuals who are currently serving, some of whom have already indicated to us an interest in being reappointed. They would include Paul Bruce Jr., Paul Bruno Sr., Alan Hunter, Cheryl Pryor, Charles Rooney Jr., John Bridges Jr., Ronald Giorgio, Wilfred Lambert, John Milano, David Muscovitz, William Pepaselli, John Ruhrwein, Anthony Saya, Raymond Spinazzola, and William J. Zampel Jr. For those individuals who I listed who do not live in Wilmington, there would be a restriction not to solicit clients, but they would be given authority to serve civil process for clients who need service into Wilmington, and also Ellen Davis Sawyer in conjunction with her duties as an animal control officer. Again, those appointments would be scheduled for the board's May 9th meeting, where I would also hope to announce my annual appointments, along with appointments to positions that require the ratification of the Board of Selectmen. And to that end, the board does have letters, all seeking reappointment as constables, from Paul Bruce Jr., Ronald Giorgio, David Muscovitz, and John Ruhrwein. The board is being asked to consider the request from Deborah Cipriani, the Recreation Director, to use the town common and gazebo for the summer concert series on successive Wednesdays in July, namely July 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th, with rain dates for the, for the next Thursday in each of those cases, and I would ask the board to consider a motion to approve.
No, no conflicts with weddings or anything on the gazebo?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, sure, okay. Any questions or comments or a motion from the board? Move to approve the use of the town common and gazebo for the annual summer concert series for the dates as described by the town manager. Second. Motion made second, all in favor? Can I?
With your permission, Mr. Chairman, there were two issues that came up. One, because of the rain on Saturday, as the board is aware, the Little League Parade and opening day ceremonies were canceled because of the weather, and they postponed those ceremonies with the hope that the board would give them approval to have as a rain date Sunday, May 1st. They had initially asked about Saturday, April 30th, but they recognized that that would conflict with the town meeting on that day, particularly in terms of the parade route, and asking if they could conduct their parade on Sunday, May 1st, where those participants would gather at the Fourth of July Building at 1:00 p.m. and then step off around 1:20 from the common and go down to Church Street for the opening day ceremonies, followed by a baseball game at 2:30. And so this is being offered to the board with the request that you would consider approving this change in date for the Little League Parade.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I move, excuse me, I'd move that we grant the request as outlined by the manager.
Second. Motion made second, all in favor? Can I?
And the second item, Mr. Chairman, was a letter that we received in today's mail from the Wilmington Band Parents and Friends. They're requesting permission to sell coffee, donuts, popcorn, cold drinks, and balloons in front of the Roman House during this year's Memorial Day Parade. This is from Kevin Blyer, the president of Wilmington Band Parents and Friends. As the board is aware, this is an annual request, and they did ask if they could have this on tonight's agenda so they could make preparations.
Okay. Questions, comments, or a motion?
Grant the request as outlined in the letter dated April 22nd.
Second. Motion made second, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business before the...
Very good. Before I go to public comments, I'd just like to make a statement that the reason for public comments is for assistance with government. Residents may have questions on government or town services. So with that in mind, let's keep it to those issues, and is there any other? You can stay right there, you don't have to go over there.
The reason I come here is because of fairness to the public, because I notice that people can't hear when people talk there.
Okay, okay.
Okay, we have a town meeting coming up this Saturday, and for the benefit of the public, as I go through the budget book, as I go through the warrant article book, there is some...
Mr. McDonald, before you even start, I just outlined what public comments are for. We have gone over the warrant articles.
It's a government issue.
Numerous, numerous meetings, okay? So for you to just come up here and again, voice your opinion, I don't think this is why public comments is here.
These are questions.
And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna let you speak on it. We've gone over these many public meetings.
I'm gonna speak on it.
Okay, no, you're not.
Yeah, we want to know how much it's costing the heat to Veterans Agent Building for one person, okay? There's gonna be some questions that...
Is there any other public comments?
...that the people deserve to have answered.
Mr. McDonald, it's, next Saturday's...
Often times, I go to the town meeting and the town accountant isn't prepared.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
So I'm trying to prepare the town accountant.
Mr. McDonald, you're done here, sir. You are done. You are absolutely done. You can't keep bringing up the same stuff. Next Saturday is the town, is the town meeting.
I would suggest that the board...
Any other public comments out there? Any other public comments?
And I'd like to know...
Okay, you're done.
...the assistant town manager is gonna be making if he's getting...
New business or committee reports?
I'd also like to know...
Mr. McDonald, you're done.
The school superintendent is gonna be making...
You're done, Mr. McDonald.
And the director of engineering...
Get the, will you see a place?
...would like to know how much his raise is gonna be. So I'd be like to be prepared for the town meeting, I'd appreciate it.
We're extremely prepared for town meetings, McDonald. That's what we do. That's what we do.
Have a lovely night.
New business committee reports.
Yeah, it's Mike Kyra. Could you send a police officer to town hall, please? Thank you. What'd you call over there?
New business or committee reports?
I just want to say, you know, I think your hands are very well with Kevin McDonald. All I want to say under new businesses, I want to congratulate Judy on her election. Look forward to working with her and the membership. And I just want to echo what you said about Ray Lepore. Ray gave nine years of his life to this town, and he's lived in Wilmington all his life. I think Ray's a good guy, and I just wish him and his family well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, again, I'm not much for repeating what's already been said, but I think on a, on a personal note, I want to quickly welcome Judy to the board and congratulate Mike to his reelection, and most importantly, reiterate that, you know, I know that Mr. Lepore will miss this position on the board, and I know that he's got some things going on that will certainly demand a lot of time from him, and, you know, he'll have some challenges ahead that have nothing to do with winning or losing an election. In fact, you know, an election pales in comparison to some things that a lot of folks deal with every day, so I wish him nothing but the best as well.
Very good. Thank you, well said. Mike, standing down here?
Yeah, well, again, welcome, Judy. Congratulations, Mike, congratulations to you as well. I'm looking forward to another year of productivity and doing the people's business. I too want to thank Ray. He was a mentor to me over the first couple of years of my term, and I, I hope I can call him friend. And I would ask the residents of Wilmington, if you see Mr. Lepore in the aisles of one of the stores, grocery stores, or at the coffee shop, reach out a hand and say, say thank you to him. He deserves our thanks. He served us well for nine years, and I hope that we'll be able to say he can serve us again in the near future in some capacity. I would also like to compliment, if I may, Mr. Kyra, you and your team, specifically Beverly and the folks that she works with, on the beautiful annual report and calendar, which are available in town hall, and I think we're probably doing a mailing as well, so I know that you've won awards in the past for the production of these publications, and we'll knock on wood and hope that we're lucky again, but regardless of award or not, this is a very nice document, so thank you for that. And lastly, I want to encourage all residents, in spite of the shenanigans you just witnessed in here, the town meeting is the purest form of democracy, and coming to the town meeting next week and having your voice heard and learning about the process and learning about these articles and about the issues behind them, it's, it's a privilege, but it's also a responsibility, and I encourage all of you to just carve out the time to come down and do so. We look forward to having a nice full gymnasium and talking about the issues and doing our business together. So thank you all for that, and yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Judy?
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to thank each of the members of the board for your well wishes. I'd also like to congratulate selectman McCoy on his reelection, and also want to thank the residents of Wilmington for coming on an election day. I'm honored to be elected in this capacity, and I certainly look forward to working as a team player with the various members of the board. I also would like to acknowledge Mr. Lepore and his nine years of dedicated service to the board. He has been a consummate professional and gentleman to me throughout this entire process, and I do want to thank him sincerely, personally, for his efforts. And I just want to say I look forward to the future, and I look forward to working together as a unified team for the best interests of the residents of Wilmington. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mike, you kind of stole my thunder. I was gonna mention the calendar and the Indiana report. It did come out very, very nice again this year, and also, again, well wishes to Ray and his family. And important dates.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, before I go through the important dates, I just think I found it necessary, unfortunately, I found it necessary, to make the following comments, and this has to do with a newspaper article that appeared in today's, today's little sign, and it attributed a comment via a quote to one of the candidates who indicated that among the supporters of Ms. O'Connell was the town manager, assuming that to be the Wilmington town manager. I don't know if the quote was accurate or not, but certainly it deserves a response from me because it is a particularly egregious statement, whether intended for any purpose or not, just the fact that it was in the newspaper was certainly inappropriate. I hold membership in the International City Managers Association and in the Mass Municipal Managers Association, and I specifically do not get involved in campaigns, and I thought that everybody who has served on this board or who has run for public office was aware of that. And so it is incumbent upon me to let the people of this community know that that statement, whether reported accurately or not, is not accurate and does not reflect any involvement on my part in a race, specifically this race. And although, like you, I welcome Ms. O'Connell to the Board of Selectmen and know her to be a very competent and polished woman who I'm sure will serve the community well, just as others have served the community well. I was not involved in her campaign, nor have I been involved in a campaign. This kind of reporting is frankly outrageous. Most reporters that I have dealt with in the past would take the time to check with somebody prior to printing something of this nature, whether or not it was reported accurately or not. They would not write something to that extent. I mean, that's, that to me was inappropriate, and I needed to have this opportunity to state that, because to be involved would be a violation of my own ethics, and it would be misconduct on my part, and so the suggestion of my involvement is abhorrent to me and is utterly and totally false. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Important dates.
This week, we have the curbside collection of yard waste, which is taking place Monday through Friday. On April 26th, which is tomorrow, here at the town hall, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. is tiny tots and kid club registration. That will be held in the town hall auditorium for anyone who is interested. Information has been included in Town Topics, but it's also online. You can get that information from the Recreation Department. April 27th, on Wednesday, is a brush drop-off date, where at the old Main Street, the Pharma Recycling Headquarters, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., residents may drop off brush at that time. On April 30th, we have the annual town meeting that begins at 10:30 a.m. at the high school gymnasium. In addition, we invite you to go to the senior center if you don't mind, as the elderly services will be holding a scholarship breakfast from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and also the brush drop-off will be available at the old Main Street on that Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Also on that day, a reminder of the National Drug Takeback Day, which is held at the Public Safety Building from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The following Saturday, May 7th, the town will hold its annual Household Hazardous Waste Day, which will be held at the West Intermediate School Parking Lot from 9:00 a.m. AM to two PM. And on May ninth, the board will next meet in regular session. And I too want to just note, the calendar and the annual report that we've already spoken about is available here at the town hall. I know many residents who voted took the opportunity to, to pick them up. And I too want to offer my compliments to Beverly and to all of the department heads and committees who submitted information for the, for the annual report. That concludes the regular business, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And May first is the Little League Parade.
And May first.
Okay, thank you. Motion adjourned? So moved? Second. Motion made second, all in favor? unanimous. Thank you.